To make corrections to the code, so something as large as this it's easy for them to fine tune it before they move it into the code so to speak. Twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen, they left it as an appendices. Twenty twenty one, it's still in the appendices in its original form. But it's also built into the fire code under existing buildings. And it gives some criteria or exemptions. See before twenty twenty one, it was all or nothing. You either leave the building as it is, or you comply to the appendices M. What's been put in in twenty twenty one kind of gaps, so there is some improvements made to bridge and bring them closer together. And we'll get into that a little bit more. Adopting the twenty twenty one fire code is critical step for ensuring the city remains aligned with the modern safety standards and best practices. As you remember earlier this year, you adopted the twenty twenty one building code. Um, these codes work hand in hand together and uh. The it's quite interesting sometimes we're out doing the inspections or working on site plans and there's requirements that are in the code. Or in the plans and our twenty twenty twelve code doesn't even address them because it's nine or ten years old. So there's a big need for us to to get caught up. Fire department has reviewed these code changes. There's over two hundred code changes since twenty twelve. And I if you're up for it, I think we could break the record for the longest meeting tonight if you wanted to go through it, but I'm just teasing. You guys hold the record, I saw that. But what we've tried to do is to look at what significantly impacts our property owners. And public safety, because we do realize things come with a cost. So what we've done is we outlined a few of the notable updates. Such as processing and extra and extraction facilities. Uh, these are the agricultural grows. Um, we didn't, we don't have them talked about in the twenty twelve, you know, that was something, this is something new for us. Mobile food preparation vehicles, mobile food carts. They are not in our code and they're they're very dangerous for public safety. So these are things that are new for us. Carbon monoxide detection requirements mandated now for existing hotels and motels. That's been coming for a long time, it's been in the building codes for a long time. Uh, but the existing hotels and motels would have to put some type of CO monitoring. And that brings us to our sprinkler systems for existing high rise buildings. Basically does apply to two buildings in the city. Um, the compliance timeline is something that that we should pay attention to because they get a year to formulate a plan. And then they get another period of time, ten, twelve, eleven, up to twelve years to execute it. So that's important aspect because it's not just a this is what needs to be done and you got to get a plan and you got to have it done tomorrow. In case you're questioning, uh, what's considered a high rise building, here's a little picture that helps explain that. And that's a building that's seventy five feet or greater to the bottom floor, bottom top floor from the lowest point of entry. Continuing with our notable changes, our alarm system upgrades and existing hotels and motels. This would fall for three of our properties in town. And it's not a you have to, there are exceptions that they can do so that they wouldn't have to. Do a complete fire alarm system installation. If they, this is really designed for hotels that are less than streets, three stories and over twenty units. If they fall within that, they have something, some criteria that if met, they wouldn't need to to do this. But and again, that's spelled out and I think we can kind of, I'm trying to just take a fifteen hundred foot flyover level of it and not really get lost in the. The details of it. And then our energy storage systems, you know, um, just think of that, uh, ten years ago, just think of all the things that have changed. And we did not have a lot of electric vehicles. Uh, residential, commercial photoelectric solar systems, battery charging stations. Um, EV charging stations, uh. And then interesting, the power balancing infrastructures, the power company can pull power from your vehicle when you plug those in sometimes too. And you go on the grid and help supply during peak times. So it's pretty interesting stuff, but it's all new. And in conclusion, that brings us to staff recommendations and I'm here tonight to ask you to schedule a work session. Our public hearing where we can discuss adopting the twenty twenty one international fire code. Align with the city codes, best practices. Um, I see this as three options for you. Um, number one, adopt the the code in its entirety, all the appendices. Adopt the twenty one code excluding different appendices. Or we choose to remain under the twenty twelve code. Um, my recommendation is that we go with the option one. That provides the highest level of safety and our greatest risk properties. Uh, that gets us caught up a little closer to the cutting edge or industry standards. Um, something that I think is important to look at, when this was rolled out in twenty twelve, that people had twelve years to comply. So they've had twelve years. So if we adopt it today, we're giving them another twelve years. So we're looking at holding them accountable for a code that's going to be twenty plus years old when they comply. Um, I think that's important to understand. So this brings us to your time. What questions do you have for me this evening?
Mission Pushbacher.
Um, I'm assuming if we adopt this, say we do the whole thing with the appendish, uh, appendices.
Appendices.
Yes, appendices. Um, I am so tired, but what I would like to, I'm wondering is. Um, what extra training will we have to give to the code enforcement and if there would be any for the firefighters?
Um, would not require any additional training. The fire marshal is the one that would be involved in this with the enforcement of it. Um, there would be a time constraint because it would take time to do the inspections and. And that would be an ongoing process as it is with any any construction pro, new construction process. The fire marshal is there on numerous occasions along the builds as the building inspectors would be also. To walk through the properties, answer questions, verify things are being installed currently.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, okay.
Okay, um. Love singer. Thank you for this, uh, for bringing us up to date and, um. Actually, I'm looking at this, what exactly you want us to agree or at least make a decision about. Scheduling a work session.
I'd like you to schedule a work session for we can get public comment and we you got, I'm, I would like to ask you to. Um, proposal that we adopt the twenty twenty one fire code.
Okay, so well, you just actually answered part of the question, so. You gave us three options and I am assuming that you want us to select one. And then schedule a work session to address that particular one.
Well, for me, it's important to state that option one is very important to me, but at the end of the day, that is your choice.
Aye.
I.
Okay.
But I want to make sure you understand the choices. This this is a big project for for these buildings that we're talking about financially. And we realize that we're not here to to put undue burdens on in our community properties at all. But there are funds, tax incentives, grants, there are a number of things out there to address these. This has been going on for many years now and international fire code has been adopted by forty three different states. It's going on in multiple cities across the United States.
I just, I just want to make sure that this is clear. Um, I, I, I believe that I understand what you're saying, my, my choice is option one. And I'm glad that that's the one that you're pointing to. I'm going to ask this and I need to just, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Indulge me, right? So the option one is the one that. Keeps the city, at least makes the city compliant with the modern international fire code, right? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
It also holds building hotels and the rest of them, you know. Accountable for being in compliance, right? It holds the city for making sure that these entities are in compliance, am I hearing you correctly?
Correct, one thing that's unique about this is the the fire code going retroactive for existing buildings. And we have, there's a section in international fire code for existing buildings. We haven't typically gone back into buildings that were built in, say, seventy nine. And so you need to comply with the building requirements and the fire requirements of today. But obviously that's the direction that they're going, um.
We're talking about, the reason why I'm asking these questions that may seem, you know. On the, yeah, well, they are necessary for me, I don't know about, you know. But the reason why I'm asking is, you know, to so that we have this on public record that we're talking about safety issues. For people who may be in these structures, right? And also the question of accountability, both on the side of the city, but also on the side of, you know. Uh, the building owners, am I hearing you correctly? That's what I'm asking, okay, I'm done, this is it, thank you, so yes, I will vote in support of. You know, setting up a work session that so that we can discuss option one.
Other questions?
Yes.
Missioner Skolitsky.
Um, I have a a few questions for you, but first of all, I want to say thank you, Chief Love Singer, for that presentation. Um, now we were looking at the twenty one, uh, fire code, correct? And the code updates every three years. Uh, is there a reason why we're not looking at the twenty four fire code?
There's usually a three or four year lag behind the fire codes. And we like to typically stay in line with the building code, the building code's twenty one. The bit, the twenty four building code is out there, but has not been adopted currently and that's, that's normal. I would expect the twenty four codes to roll in about twenty seven. Because it takes that that amount of time. Because it takes that, that amount of time for it to go through that new code inspection process that takes place in the code world, so to speak, before it gets adopted. Answer all their questions. And there's a, a, there's like four hundred different professions and people represented on these international code council that sets these. And it's a long process, never-ending process. It's real thrilling to sit and read the notes, but
Sure.
Not really, but, yeah.
No, that all makes perfect sense. Um, and your guys' research, have you, um, calculated the estimated cost as far as what it would take to renovate the buildings that are gonna be affected by the, uh, code change?
They have projections and they're, they're, they're pretty broad anywhere from two to ten dollars a square foot. But realistically, you're looking at north of a million and a half per building probably. You know, but again, don't hold me to that. I'm not the, the installer or anything. I'm looking at numbers and following the research and for what has taken place. And that's why I think it's really important to understand the tax incentives that are put together. Uh, the grants that are out there. Um, how they can write off that expense, that's been changed in the tax codes. There's been a lot of governmental work to help with that endlet. I'm sure it's not gonna cover it all, but that's where the twelve years comes in.
Exactly.
You know, and it's a pretty important thing for us, for those tenants.
Yeah, uh, it makes a lot of sense. Um, and if I remember looking at the slides correctly, uh, two thousand twelve was the last update and that excluded, uh, appendus, uh, appendice M, which was the automated sprinklers.
Correct, and retrofit in existing high-rise buildings.
So there's no newer or none of the older con- buildings since, uh, for what, the last twenty years have had any type of, um, automatic sprinklers included with them?
Yes, they have. The new, new buildings will require them.
Sure.
Or if they remodel over a certain dollar amount that's established by the building official. Then he won't make it required.
But anything older than, what, two thousand twelve?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, uh, correct me if my line of thinking is wrong. Uh, obviously, building code, uh, would delegate what type of construction and how construction is done for anything that's being done uh, new or any permits that's being pulled. So that doesn't stop anybody from installing, uh, EV charger at home. And with no current code, the fire marshal has no power to do anything about that?
He does have some because if the building code supersedes the international fire code. So if the fire code doesn't address something and it's, and the fire code does, we might end up having to pull a section of the twenty-twenty-one fire code and use it even though it's not adopted. That makes sense.
But we're not actively educating anybody involved on the newer building codes because they deal with fire codes? Primarily?
Primarily, correct.
Okay.
And we do a lot of, uh, educating when we're doing the building process. Or when we're planning and we're sitting down with these folks and we're looking at designing the building and what the problems are. And one of the things that we try to do, we can't do it all the time. One of the things we try to do is we tell them, oh, you can't do what you're looking at doing here. You can't do it this way. You, you, but if you make this change, you can do this. If, if you make this change. So it gives them some options that may not be as expensive as it would be if they had to comply with it. We just told them, no, you don't have to do that.
Sure. Um, one more question. Uh, you mentioned how there was kind of some, uh, it was very stringent as far as code goes while it was being adopted and implemented. And then there became some gray window like with the automatic sprinklers. Is there anything in the twenty-one code that is extremely stringent, an appendice that we would need a particular um, consideration on whether it needs to be included in the update? I mean, obviously, safety is extremely important, but, I mean, if Mount Pleasant doesn't have an extreme amount of high-rises, we don't have fifteen, twenty-story buildings or anything along those lines. So, you know, if there's something that we need to take extra consideration on within that code without sifting through it with a comb.
Yep. Appendices M is the most stringent part of it that gives you an option. Um, the rest of them, we've all been operating on. There's really not any new appendices that were added this year. Um, but it does give you some options there. But it's pretty important to understand when we, when you get, uh, a building that was built back pre-nineteen eighty. Uh, the alarm system is antiquated, the sprinkler systems, they may have sprinklers in the rooms, but not in the hallways. They may have them in the hallways and common areas, but not in the rooms. And, and some of them, I commend them because when we brought this up in twenty-twelve, there was quite a, an uproar over it. And they came forward and spoke and they were against it, of course. But some of them have been taking active steps, working towards getting closer to that because they know it's coming. And that's what we've communicated to them is, okay, we, we didn't get this passed now, but it's not going away. It's going to come back. And so they, they know that it's coming and they're, some of them are planning for it. And they've made changes above and beyond what we can request of them so far. And that's a positive thing because they, they, they wanna be safe too.
I agree. Uh, thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners, uh, who haven't had a chance to ask questions yet? Yeah, Commissioner Bush.
I, I, this is perhaps the direction you were gonna head off in anyway, but, um, what are we required to do at this point? I already feel like we have a, a, a great depth of understanding of what's going on. We've kind of turned this into a little bit of a, of a work session de facto. So what are, what are we qua- required to do as a, as a commission? Are we required to have a public hearing? Are we?
It sounds like to adopt and update this, we would need the public hearing. So, um, again, based off the, the, the quest in the presentation, um, when we get to new business later, we could have that discussion if a member of the commission wants to discuss that. It wasn't something specifically on the agenda.
Okay.
But, um, under announcements on city-related issues and new business, that would be something that we could discuss further. Yeah.
Commissioner Pirschbacher?
Um, technically, we usually have a work session just to make sure that we're all on the same page before we, um, and then, you know, Doug will bring us the updated stuff, show us what, what we have. And then we set a, a public hearing later so that we don't get into a public hearing and go, oh, I didn't know that was in there. So we wanna make sure that we follow the steps.
Thank you, Commissioner Pirschbacher. Um, other questions at this time? Did you still have questions?
Actually, Commissioner Pirschbacher just addressed what I was, you know, part of my comments. I'm okay.
Okay.
So it's what decision we make now than now?
Yeah, well, later in the meeting.
Yeah, so.
Uh, brief question for myself, and I think you addressed it already, so I may hear you repeat yourself. Sorry about that, Doug. Um, let's see, um, why now against the twenty-twenty-one code, um, and it's twenty-twenty-five? Why reconsider it at this time versus earlier or later? And I think your thoughts there?
The best way is that there was a lot of, uh, upset over the appendices M. And we didn't have a middle ground. Um, so if you chose, if you chose not to go with option one and you went with option two, we're at least getting something.
Okay.
Um, something's better than nothing, a hundred percent. I totally agree with that. But, um, when you look at the information we get or the information we don't get when we are going to a fire in a high-rise building in these two buildings. We don't know where we're going. We don't know what floor we're going to. Unless somebody's calling central dispatch telling us, hey, my room is on fire. We know there's water flowing in the building. That's really all we know. And we're gonna get there and go to the fire line. And still doesn't point us into a specific direction. We don't know what wing it is unless hopefully, somebody's gonna tell us this. Somebody's gonna pull a fire alarm. Somebody's gonna talk to central dispatch. But if they don't, we don't know where we're going. We're, okay, we're going to the floor. Well, found out when we got up there, the sixth floor, we should have used the other stairwell. It's a bad time. That's it. And the a lot of the people that live in, living in these two buildings don't have a lot of mobility. Huge problems for us. And, uh, the earlier, we can get a sprinkler head tripped containing. Sprinklers have been proven time and time again to save buildings and lives. Sometimes they put the fire out, but what they do do is they contain it to the room of origin until we can get there and put it out. And that early detection and knowing exactly where it is and what to do and where to go is very important for the tenants to get out. Because they won't be getting out. A lot of times, they'll just be going over to a different set of wing, down a different fire door where there's protection and they can buy time, you know?
Thank you, Chief Love Singer.
My call's up.
We should be. Okay. That brings us to additions and deletions to the agenda. So if there's anything we'd like to add or remove from the agenda as far as discussion items, um, is there anything for the members of the commission? Not seeing anything. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
My move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to public input on agenda items. If you're a member of the public and would like to comment on any of the items on the agenda, please step up to the podium. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name, address, as, name and address for the record, as well as the item you're speaking on. If you're on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. Jason, any emails? Anyone online? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak at this time?
Hi, everyone. Um, I would like to speak this evening on behalf of myself as a citizen of Mount Pleasant. My name is Katie Mora and I live at six-two-seven Highland Street, um, right here in town. And, um, wanted to address the work session later today, um, related to the alternate pathways for, um, the trail system. And, uh, and just wanted to, um, express that my hope is that, um, we can find some middle ground. Um, i- if, if there's a way that that particular pathway, um, could still be paved, um, but also take into account the natural surroundings of White's Woods. Um, I would love to see that happen. Um, I think from a, uh, accessibility standpoint, uh, I was excited that that might be something that more people would get to enjoy. Um, many people don't necessarily know this, but, um, I injured my back pretty severely back in twenty-twenty and have, uh, enjoyed the park system for many years with my family and kids. I've got four, um, beautiful kids at home, um, ranging from eighteen all the way down to nine. And we love the park system here. It's such a great asset. And, um, have always enjoyed getting to walk through Chippewa Waters Park and the trail system that connects down to these other parks as well. And we used to go to White's Woods a lot, um, but since my back injury, that's not something that we've been able to do as much. Um, actually, I know they've gone, but I've stayed back home, um, because it's really difficult for me to walk on uneven ground. So we try to stay on, um, on the paved paths when we can. And it's been unfortunate because we really do, um, White's Woods is a sanctuary and a really beautiful place to be able to go and to walk. Um, and so, um, again, um, if there is a way for that to, to be paved, but also take into account, I know, um, some of the, uh, natural amenities that we see there. Um, if there's a way to do that, that would ideally be my preference. Um, and I just wanted to make sure I had the opportunity to share that with you all. Um, I don't know if there are alternate routes that, that will come up or if that will still be the preferred route. Um, but the alternate routes, um, safety is also a concern, especially for bikers on the roadways as they're driving, um, potentially long distances across the trail, that this would have the ability to connect. Um, and so just wanted to share, um, from my point of view where I'm coming from and, um, hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't know if this is the appropriate time. Alan Montoy, I live at twelve-twelve Forest Lane. Uh, but since she's brought this up, uh, I was gonna bring it up later, but the comments at the end, but seems like this is the appropriate time. Um, okay, give me a moment. Uh, I have one of these computer devices. And I will try to make it work. Since the last, uh, commission vote to put the proposal for White's Woods Trail on indefinite hold. And because I was one of the, uh, one who voiced opposition to, uh, development of that trail, I felt that, uh, it'd be good if I made suggestions for possible alternate routes, uh, for connecting uh, Mid-Michigan Community Pathway to Mill Pond Park. It's my understanding that was one of the primary reasons to put that trail uh, through White's Woods because you can certainly walk on it now. Um, the idea, I guess, was paving it, then you could put wheeled vehicles through there, uh, which we thought was a, not a good idea, as you know. Um, I have ridden my bicycle in and around Mount Pleasant for forty-nine years that I've lived here. And the roads around here are coming, uh, becoming, uh, very crowded, dangerous, distracted drivers, higher speeds and so on. So riding on the roads is, is something I won't do anymore. And that's, to me, has been quite a loss. So I was very much, uh, in favor of the Mid-Michigan Community Pathway development as a safe alternative to riding from Mount Pleasant to Shepherd and so on, and perhaps, uh, greater distances at some time, uh, as a, as a safety factor. I use that trail several times a week. Every other day, I'm on that trail from Mount Pleasant to Shepherd. Once in a while, I see another bicycle. Once in a while, I see another person walking on it. It's not widely used. And I think that's a tragedy. I wish I was having to steer around lots of bicycles. They wouldn't be in their cars, but that's not the case. The fact is, it's just not very well-used and that's, that's a disappointment. I don't know what we can do. We can't change society, uh, but at least, uh, we can keep that option there. Um, currently, the trail ends at Broomfield and West Campus Drive. Uh, there's a traffic light there. Uh, and the most direct route from that point to Mill Pond Park would be directly down West Campus Drive. Um, and it would go, um, well, a little jog. Let me see if I can get the file up here. Bear with me. I was born in nineteen fifty. Who's laughing over there? As I adjust my bifocals to get to this. Okay, uh, on this map, oops, am I up? Did it work? Yes, well, that one worked.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I think I can do it this way. So this is the corner of, uh, I'm lost. Broomfield and West Campus Drive. You see, I, I've, uh, highlighted that with an orange marker. This street right here is West Campus Drive. It crosses Preston. And then it makes a little jog here and goes to here. This is May Street. It's all four houses long. And this little part of Watson here is about a hundred feet, maybe a hundred and fifty. And now you're at the corner of Watson and High Street where there is a traffic light and a pedestrian crossing. What I would suggest, because of the, uh, amount that this, oh, let me, uh, I'll talk about this one too. This is Stockman Street here, which parallels West Campus Drive. It goes through these two little streets here, crosses, uh, Preston, Glendon Street and on up to, uh, May Street and to the, uh, junction of, um.
Alan, your time's expired, but if you want to come back later and everything, would be able to.
Oh, you quit now? Come back later?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, anyway, think about that. Here's, I made you a couple of copies. You can Well, anyway, think about that. Here's, I made you a couple of copies. You can look at them while we're.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak at this time? Please step up to the podium. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name, address, and the item you're commenting on.
Hello, I'm Chris Rowley. I'm a resident of Union Township. I'm fourth generation Isabella County resident, though, so long history here. Um, and I serve as the Director of the Mount Pleasant Convention and Visitors Bureau. The C V B is a destination marketing and management organization for Isabella County. Our role is to not only market Mount Pleasant, but to bring visitors here, but also to invest in projects that improve the quality of life for our residents. Over the years, we've supported lights and batting cages at Pickens Field, bike repair stations in our parks and town center. Because when we strengthen our community for our residents, we make it stronger for our visitors. And I'm here to take today to talk about the trail system as well. Uh, there's a saying in our industry and tourism, if you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people need to work. And if you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where business wants to be. And if you build a place where business wants to be, we'll be back to building a place where people want to visit. It all starts with a visit. Visitors already come to Mount Pleasant for C M U, for the Soran Eagle Casino and events. But we can give them more to do. They stay longer. And when they stay longer, they spend more money in our hotels and our restaurants and our shops. Jim Holton, owner of Mountain Town Station, will tell you that forty percent of his business comes from visitors. That spending power keeps our doors open for locals as well. I'm here to support the trails in our community and the original proposal that does go through White's Woods that the consultant will be talking about later this evening. The proposed trail through White's Wood isn't just a path in nature. It's our potential connection to major trail system, the Fred Meyer Trail and the Pierre Marquette Rail Trail, connecting us more statewide. Right now, Mount Pleasant is not connected, and going through White's Woods is the most direct and cost-effective route. In twenty twenty-three, tourism brought two, three hundred and twenty-eight million dollars into Isabella County, and of that ninety-six million was directly in recreation. Almost thirty-seven million went back into state and local taxes. And trails are not just amenities, they are economic drivers. As we know, uh, people want them on our website, on our Chippewa River, our outdoor adventure and our trails page on meet M T P dot com. Trails, all those are among the most visited pages with almost a minute spent on each of those. That tells us that visitors are actively looking for trails when they plan a trip. I want to acknowledge the neighborhood concerns as well. I understand that the change in your backyard can feel difficult. But trails designed through nature areas like White's Woods are proven to be safe, well-used and well-loved, according to Michigan Trails Association. In fact, their study shows that time in nature lowers stress, improves mood, and strengthens community connections. This isn't just about visitors, it's about our residents too. When we have a chance to make Mount Pleasant connected to two statewide trails, I think the question should be not if we should do it, but why haven't we done it yet? We've been planning this for decades, and now we have the opportunity to do it for our economy, for our residents, and for the future of Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Liz Conway. I am a resident of Deerfield Township, but I represent the Mount Pleasant Area Community Foundation. Nearly fifteen years ago, the community foundation helped bring the Access Adventure Trail through Chippewa Waters Park to life. This project helped to provide recreational opportunities to people of all abilities. And it showed us how trails can help to enhance and transform the quality of life in a community. I am here today to express my excitement on the next steps to make this path complete. Whether it's through White's Woods or elsewhere, I hope that concerned citizens recognize the benefits of a project like this. Not only will we be creating access to recreation for all residents and visitors, but we'll be connecting Isabella County to a trail network that will help to strengthen our health, strengthen our community ties, and enhance our visibility within the region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Backtill, thirteen fifty-nine Tomah Drive.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, as you can see on that map, I have routed the most direct pathway from Broomfield Road through, following, uh, Crawford Road down Preston, and then you turn on Watson, and that is the simplest pathway to get to our existing trails from the proposed Fred Meyer, Fred Meyer Route. One of the things to take, to remember, uh, I'll reiterate, is that going through White's Woods takes you through a wetlands area. If you look at historical data on the river, where if you follow the pathway that is currently in White's Woods, if you follow that pathway and take that right when it gets to the river, that will most likely be underwater in ten, fifteen years because of the change in the river. So the engineering for this, I, I respectfully disagree, would be much more costly than doing that pathway that I just showed you there. That is currently a very safe route, considering that is the same pathway that children go to school in vowels. So we already have a plethora of trails that are paved, so this gives everybody a unique taste of having some natural trails where we see students and residents putting up, uh, their hammocks to read books. People walk their dogs all the time through there. This just gives you another flavor of the trail system. And I'm all for access, but I do believe if you try to engineer a route through White's Woods, you're gonna have some challenges that whether you, uh, are able to sustain those, and you're gonna have to have funds to maintain that because you're gonna have some challenges that Mother Nature's gonna throw at you. So, um, again, it's a totally different flavor and vibe when you go through White's Woods as opposed to any of our other woods. And the nice thing, when you follow that path, it's a nice safe path where there are plenty of residents there that you're going through the front of the houses, so if there's anybody that has issues, say they crashed their bike, get bit by a dog or anything like that, there's plenty of people there to help them if, if need be. So, uh, thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience at this time for public comment? Seeing no one coming up, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments on agenda items. See, now move us into receipt of petitions and communications. Manager desents, if you would.
Received petitions and communications this evening includes minutes of the planning commission from July, minutes of the Mission Pickard Downtown Development Authority from May, and resignation of Brian Weefrich from the Tifa Board.
Thank you. Now bring us into consent items. So manager desents again, if you would.
Consent items this evening includes approval of minutes from the regular meeting held August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Consider appointment of a voting delegate and alternate for the Michigan Municipal League. Consider awarding the total bid contract for the twenty twenty-five Nelson Park North Island Park restroom roof replacement, plus the additional restroom and pavilion at Chippewa Waters to Greenwald B and C general contractor for a price of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars with a budget amendment of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars from the general fund. Consider approval of a budget amendment in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars for completion of the women's locker room and furnishing of the living quarters at the Public Safety Building. Consider resolution of intent to renew Mission Pickard Downtown Development Authority Tifa and set a public hearing for September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five on the same. Set a public hearing on September eighth, twenty twenty-five to consider an Oprah tax abatement for one fifteen and one seventeen South University, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you. Let's see, at this time, are there any items that would, that the commission would like to move out of the consent, uh, consent agenda? Or any items that we'd like to make an amendment to? Hold on, um, might as well go ahead and do it. Um, I would propose an amending in the minutes presented. It does state the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. It was held on August eleventh, so we would just want to make an amendment of that typo there. Um, is there a second to that motion? Okay. All those in favor of amending item number five to list August eleventh's meeting of twenty twenty-five? Um, please go, um, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Okay, so they were amending item five to list August eleventh. Um, again, any items that we'd like to move out of the consent agenda or any questions from the commission? No, not seeing any. Um, a couple of things I wanted to check on real quick. Andrew Desence, if you could remind us on item number ten, um, just give us a brief highlight of that. That is the Oprah tax abatement for one fifteen, one seventeen South University.
Absolutely. One second. Yep. So the owners at one fifteen and one seventeen South University had applied for an obsolete property rehabilitation act tax exemption to apply to the aforementioned properties. The district was created in twenty twenty-one and follows the same boundaries as the Central Business District. Property owners within the Central Business District can apply for the abatement if they meet the criteria set forth in the attached policy that you have in your packet. Full application for the exemption has been provided in your packet. Approval of the Oprah exemption would freeze the property values in place at the current levels. As improvements are made by the owner, the property taxes uh, of all taxing jurisdictions would not increase with the new property value until the end of the exemption period. In this case, the owner would be asking for an exemption period of twelve years. After twelve years, the exemption would expire, and the city and all other taxing entities would be able to collect taxes based on the new property value. Steph has reviewed the application for the Oprah exemption at both one fifteen and one seventeen South University Street. Steph believes that the proposed development meets the goals of the Oprah program by encouraging significant investment in the downtown. Prior to consideration, the city commission will need to hold a public hearing on the proposed exemption. After the public hearing, the city commission can vote to authorize the Oprah exemption as proposed, make a modification to the request such as limiting the number of years of the exemption, or deny the exemption.
Okay, thank you. That follows a theme of investments in our downtown area, I think, that we've been making, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to highlight again, hearings on September eighth, and there it's a mouthful of tax information there, so I appreciate you, um, bringing that to our attention. Um, that was the only thing I wanted to highlight there. Is there anything else from the members of the commission? With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motioned and sec- and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. See, we have no public hearings this evening. Um, that would bring us to new business. Um, consider appointments to various boards and commissions as recommended by the Appointments Committee. Um, members of the, um, commission will note from the receipt of petitions and communications that we had a resignation from the Tifa Board for Brian Weefrich, um, and we are looking to fulfill or fill that role there. Um, we are working on filling in additional two roles as well, and we're getting applicants slowly trickling in. We're, um, bringing interest to that area. Um, this would be part of our um, interest in maintaining that district, um, to provide additional incentives, um, and tax incentives, grants, um, for the downtown businesses. For this role, uh, we, uh, we had, um, Mr. Luke Castle apply for the open position. Um, he is a representative of Middle Michigan Development Corporation. Let me pull up his specific title there. Let's see. Let's see. Let's see. Yeah, Mr. Um, Castle is currently the Community Development Director for the Middle Michigan Development Corporation. And one thing that I also thought was, um, exciting about his, um, at, his, um, resume is that he currently runs the downtown merchant meetings as well through M M D C. So on a regular basis, he is meeting with members of the downtown business community and getting that input and feedback there. Um, let's see. With that, um, any questions, um, from members of the commission on this topic?
Just as a member of the committee, I support this recommendation.
Thank you. See. Um, with that, not seeing any questions or anything? Yeah, Vice Mayor Akai.
I just want to clarify that, um, I hope that there will be an understanding that uh, conflict of interest, as it applies to all of us, would apply to to him should a situation or a case arise where the organization for which he works might benefit from decisions made by the group.
Yeah, that is an excellent question there, Vice Mayor, and that was some discussion that we had on the back end as well about it. Um, so being a representative, especially being a representative of M M D C, it was the question of we contract with M M D C currently, so were there any conflicts of interest there? Um, I had, um, manager desents look into that topic there. Manager desents, if you'd like to talk to us a bit about that?
Yeah, yeah, we looked, uh, first off at state law, and, uh, the state has something called the Incompatible Offices Act, um, which is interesting too, because, uh, there's a lot of things, certain things that commissioners can and cannot do. Obviously, commissioners cannot work for the city of Mount Pleasant, serve on the commission. But what's interesting is in the Incompatible Offices Act, Tifa's actually gonna carve out for virtually every one of those positions, which I thought was pretty unique. Um, so there's nothing at the state that we're able to find in terms of a conflict of interest or anything like that. We looked at our own internal policies. We believe that this appointment does not violate any of our internal policies either.
Okay, but I'm not actually talking about the violation, but if, for instance, M M D C were to benefit from a decision where he is going to have to vote.
Yes, yeah.
So that's, you have to recuse himself, right? Okay, I just wanted to draw attention to that.
Yeah, and that, that is correct there, and, uh, I would say a majority, historically, a majority of the members of the Tifa Board have been, uh, downtown business owners who at some point or another could potentially have business before that board. Um, and the poli- and policy would dictate that they would need to recuse themselves. That's something that they should be aware of. Um, and that'd be the expectation there, and I believe that's a requirement of anyone on that board could point to the fact that, you know, hey, Vice Mayor Akai, who's sitting next to me, you have business before us. I would ask that you recuse yourself on that. Um, so that's something that would take place there. Let's see, so.
Thank you.
Other questions from the members of the commission? Okay, seeing none, um, let's see. Remind myself when I would recommend, or I motion to appoint, uh, Luke Castle of Middle Michigan Development Corporation to the, um, Central Business District, Central Business District Tifa Board.
Seconded.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. See. Okay. Cruising right along this evening, we are moving on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Um, kicking us off this evening, Commissioner Alsager, is there anything you would like to discuss this evening or bring to our attention?
Well, I just have one thing. At our last meeting, I mentioned that our local Rotary Club was celebrating their one-hundredth anniversary, and they had an event at, last Monday. Um, it was a ribbon cutting, and they treated us very well. They, um, provided a meal and they had some speakers, and then they took a big group picture, which I didn't get part of because I was not wearing a Rotary shirt. But anyhow, it's a really neat, um, gift that they've given us. It's a musical thing that if you go to Nelson Park, you would enjoy playing with it a little bit.
Thank you, Commissioner Alsager. Commissioner Bush?
Well, I have two things. One is if it would be appropriate, I would like to request that we entertain a work session to further discuss, um, updating the fire code. Um, so I wanted to add that to your tablet there. And then, uh, I'd also like to, um, I, I mean, school did start on Thursday, but prior to that, since our last meeting, our students, um, from the Mount Pleasant region who participated in the Okaia Sister City Exchange have returned. Um, I'm looking forward to attending a meeting on Wednesday night where they're gonna go over a little bit about their experience. Um, it's, uh, for those of you who aren't aware, um, it's, we recently celebrated the sixtieth anniversary of our, um, sister city. It's, uh, for those of you who aren't aware, um, it's, we recently celebrated the sixtieth anniversary of our, um, sister city relationship with Okaia. It may now be the oldest sister city relationship in Mount, in Michigan. Um, it's definitely at least the second. Anyway, I should have that information, but, um, but the, um, yeah, just looking forward to hearing what these young people have brought back about their cultural exchange with Okaia.
Can you tell us when and where?
So I, you know, when I started talking and I'm not a hundred percent sure it's open to the public now that I think about this, but. Yeah, so, yes, but, um, it will, uh, I would look forward to sharing that information with the commission. If you are interested in hearing more about it, please email me and I'll try to get that information about whether or not it's open to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush, and I think, um, a work session on the fire code would definitely be, um, in line based off of discussion or recommendations from staff, so, um, not, if there's no serious objections from other members of the commission, we can work on getting that scheduled so we can have further discussion on that. And, yeah, discuss that at greater length. Same. Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Akai, any updates?
Uh, besides the fact that C M U is now open and our students are back and there are quite a number of, you know, um, freshman students, I don't know who came up with that title freshman. You know, brand new, you know, sort of first year students in town who don't know the city, who don't know the town. I, I'm just simply saying that, you know, it's, it's important to be kind to them, to be patient. There are a lot of people in town who don't understand or who don't know directions in town. And so I am trying to be patient. So, you know, mission is a nightmare, you know, just this week, so be patient. No road rage or, you know, yeah, so just a little bit of kindness goes along with. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Pirschbacher?
Um, I'd also like to, um, welcome the students, um, C M U, Mid Michigan, Tribal College, and, um, the Mount Pleasant school, uh, children that have returned to school. We're excited to see the uptick in business and, um, bustle around. I know that a lot of people don't like the energy that the students bring, but I do. I enjoy that, um, seeing so many out and, um, enjoying our wonderful city. I'd also like to remind people that, um, it is cooler, it is getting cooler, it's very nice out to go for walks. Please make sure that you put your dogs on a leash and understand that your dogs must stay within your yard. They cannot run out, getting into the, into the road or chasing people. It's for the safety, not only for your pets, but also for the people that are walking down the road.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pirschbacher. Commissioner Rollins, any?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Sklitsky?
Uh, yes, uh, last time we met, uh, I brought up, uh, my concern regarding housing since it was a prevalent topic of discussion for the commission. Since then, I was given a couple of reports, uh, from manager dissents. One of them, uh, disclosed that we have over five hundred single-family homes that are owned by people outside of Mount Pleasant, which is very concerning since I know there is a very large demand for single-family homes, uh, available for purchase inside the city limits. Uh, I would like to sift through this information and see what other, what else I can kind of dig up. A lot of them were to, um, P O boxes, um, which obviously are probably, uh, corporations outside of the state, I feel is, uh, most likely suspect. So I would like to gather some more information and, uh, and bring that for a work session for the commission in the near future.
Thank you. Let's see, um, just on that topic, yeah, I would be supportive of a work session of that type as well. I think that'd be, um, a good topic for us to have, you know, um, housing, as we have addressed, has been a big topic for the commission, so looking at all aspects to see how we can improve, um, access and ownership and everything within the city and amongst our residents. I think that'd be an important topic there. So thank you, Commissioner Sklitsky.
Thank you.
Okay, um, one topic I'd like to bring up would be my fellow commissioners specifically. Y'all should have received, um, I believe it would be no before security training sent to your emails. It wasn't certain if it was a junk email at first, but, uh, manager to sense reassured me that we are currently working with, um, again, it's no before. It's a security training services for just like online, just to monitor and make sure we're aware of, um, just our usage. And I would encourage you to participate. Um, it just, um, goes over common scams and phishing, um, items that come through. So keep an eye out for that. Welcome back to the students, um, let's see. Think that largely covers everything for myself here. Let's see. Might as well start making a note of it coming up. This is my first at-large, um, notification. The first meeting in October, I will be absent, so, um, it'd be our October thirteenth meeting, I will be absent. Vice Mayor Akai should be there at that meeting to manage the meeting. Let's see, with that, I think that ends announcements on city-related issues and new business, and we can move into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. So if you would like to speak further, please step up and everything. We'll give you five minutes. Um, you can speak on anything on your mind. Let's see. Let's see.
All right. While I plug this in, Mr. Bechtel's, uh, description of, uh, the connector on Watson, uh, directly parallels what I was talking about earlier. And, uh, I, you know, that's okay, Watson's a busy street. That's not, wouldn't be my favorite street to ride a bicycle on. So I would prefer the other side streets. With respect to trails, um, let me show you a picture of what the current Mid Michigan pathway looks like. If this. Am I working? Here it goes. Okay, let's try it again. Okay, uh, this is the pathway that was, uh, built from Shepherd to Mount Pleasant, and this is the kind of maintenance that we have. Personally, I spent several hours, uh, driving a truck along this path earlier this year with various brush trimming devices to try to keep the branches out of my face when I was riding along here. Needless to say, this asphalt is not safe. Nothing has been done. I've tried emailing, calling, uh, I can get absolutely nowhere, uh, to find anybody that, uh, will maintain this. Currently, this is near the, uh, wetland area. You will see that that's a hole. That was a hole that caved in a few years ago. They came through, they repaired it, now it's collapsing again. It's been that way for the entire summer. No one has addressed that. That's what would happen to your bicycle if you happened to drive into it. That is a serious hazard, I think. And there's more of the same thing. And if you're going to build a trail, great, please maintain it. Delegate the money to maintain it. This is, was a big project, it's hardly ever used, nobody's maintaining it. Think about that when you're thinking about building new trails in town. It's a great idea, but I don't think in reality it's going to be well-used, sorry to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Alan. Other members of the audience who'd like to give public comments at this time, please step up to the microphone. You'll be, be given five minutes. Is there, um, if you're on Zoom, please use the raised hand function. Director Moore, any emails? Any raised hands? Gotcha. Not seeing anyone rushing up to the microphone at this time. I'm going to close public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Let's see, time is currently eight oh seven. Um, do members of the commission want to move into the work session or is there a desire for a recess?
Sure.
Recess.
Gotcha. Um, let us have a five-minute recess then. Um, we'll resume at the eight thirteen. Okay.
Just have it set up.
Oh, perfect.
For this, and then the memos are right here.
Okay, I'll probably just use the maps.
I figured, I just, just in case you needed to go back.
Perfect.
Because one of them. So.
Do I need anything to put up on the screen or?
No, they'll, he'll do it.
He'll do it, okay. Very good.
Yep, when we go through it, it'll, it'll pop it up, but, yeah, I plan on just going through their timeline and stuff. And going through it down. Enter you and.
Thirteen P M, and let's see, we are having a work session on alternate routes for the Mid Michigan G K B Pathway South Connection Project. Uh, manage your dissents, if you want to tee us up?
Absolutely, yeah. So our director of Parks Recreation, and I always cut this part off, Parks Recreation and Public Spaces, Phil Biscorner is here. Uh, the city's been working with Beckett and Raider on looking at some alternatives for the trail route, um, as we had discussed here. And so, uh, Director Biscorner is here with a representative from Beckett and Raider to, uh, to at least, um, show the city commission those alternative routes, answer any questions that you may have. Uh, city commission's asked to.
Oh, you're a good manager.
Yep, city commission is just asked to, uh, engage in the discussion, and if the city commission feels strong about making a, uh, decision here this evening, you certainly are able to, or if there's any further information that you would need, certainly let us know. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Biscorner.
Good evening. So we brought this, uh, a couple of times to the city commission, uh, but back in November, uh, I had a presentation that went through kind of the history and how we came to, um, the original route through White's Woods that ultimately would go through, uh, White's Woods and end up at Center Drive. Coming out at Center Drive and going south on Crawford, crossing over Broomfield and then going east on Broomfield, which would be the south side of Broomfield along Inter IM Fields, uh, through C M U and connect to where the pathway is now. During that time, you had asked me, the city commission had asked me to, uh, go back and look for alternative routes. And so, um, we reached back out to Beckett and Raider who did the initial concept. Actually did the north trail segment as well, um, so they're pretty familiar with the area now. So it was kind of nice to bring them in, but, so I have, uh, Brian Barrick, uh, he's with Beckett and Raider, and he is going to walk you through the alternative routes that we have put together up to this time. And I don't know why that just did the. There we go. All right.
All right. Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. So thank you for the introduction, Phil. As, uh, as he mentions, uh, Beckett and Raider put together the original, uh, route concepts here a couple of years ago, uh, connecting from, uh, from Chip Waters Park through White, White's Woods to Central Drive and then, uh, south, uh, on Crawford to, oops, to, uh, uh, Broomfield, and boy, I keep hitting things here, my apologies. And then, oh, meeting the existing trail over a campus drive. The route length for this originally proposed, uh, trail is one point three six miles. And at the time that this concept was developed, the conceptual cost for that was, uh, approximately one point eight five million. Pursuant to your request, we have gone back and put together five, uh, potential, uh, alternative routes for your consideration. A couple of them will look, uh, eerily similar to a couple of the ideas that were, uh, presented here by the public today. Okay, uh, one option, uh, would be to connect southward from, uh, Chip Waters Park through White's. Okay, one option would be to connect southward from Chip Waters Park through White's Woods through the Mount Pleasant Community Church property to Broom Broomfield Wood, or excuse me, Broomfield. This this route, there are some pros and cons to all of these alternative routes. This does maintain a direct connection to Chip Waters Park and White's Woods. Maintaining a recreational focus on the 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 trail route. Some drawbacks to this is that it does include private property through Mount Pleasant Community Church. So there would be need for for land control, probably in the form of a public access easement. This also increases the length of the trail along Broomfield Road, which west of Crawford is, you know, is a narrower cross section on that road, higher speeds, et cetera. And then, as mentioned earlier, through White's Woods, there is some low area there, some wetlands. So we would a section of boardwalk would be required. The boardwalk in this route is a little bit longer than in the original concept, just due to the geometry of the trail and the manner in which it crosses the wetland. This route length is about 11 tenths of a mile longer than the originally proposed proposed route. And the conceptual cost delta, this option would be roughly $450,000 more than the original route. The next alternative concept is a variation on this theme that does again, goes south to Broomfield. This goes to the next property over, which is 1526 Broomfield. Doing this allows us to avoid the wetland. So there's not a need for a boardwalk, but it does also need land control, likely in the form of public access easement. It also increases the length along Broomfield Road. It winds up being about 0.39 mile longer than the original proposed route and about $100,000 more. This is a route that was was mentioned a little earlier tonight. This is the Watson Road Connection. So connecting from an existing pathway along High Street, moving south along along Watson Road, turning on Preston and then south on Crawford. And from the intersection of Crawford and Central Center Drive, then it rejoins the originally proposed route, south on Crawford to Broomfield and then east towards the existing trail at Campus Drive. The the positive aspect of this is it does utilize the existing path along High Street. The drawbacks are that it does not have a direct connection to Chip Waters Park. Invites Woods so that we lose sort of that recreational aspect of the trail and the connection to to the city's recreational assets. The pathway along the public roadways winds up being, in many cases, directly along the back of the curb for the road. As part of development of a non-motorized trail, standards are for a minimum 10 foot width. The existing sidewalks along these roadways are much narrower, so they need to be widened. There are existing conditions along these roadways that that would impact construction and need bodification. Mainly grading challenges. There are significant areas of vegetation, both inside the right of way as well as on adjacent private property that would potentially be impacted. And in some cases, there may be a loss of street parking as well in order to make connections. This route length winds up being about 0.38 miles longer than the original proposed route. And a conceptual cost delta of an additional $75,000. This option takes us a little further afield from High Street all the way over to Lincoln and then south to Broomfield and then connecting back to to the existing pathway at Campus Drive. This is obviously a much longer trail, over two miles longer. There's a lot of inhibiting factors, grades, curb cuts, vegetation, the crossing of the Chippewa River on Lincoln, et cetera, et cetera. It would also require partnership with Union Township in Isabel County. So this is this is, you know, probably not the most ideal option, but we wanted to nevertheless show it to you to just to exhibit that it's been explored. And the cost delta is significantly more at about 3.1 million. Option five connects from High Street through the old university housing parcel and then connects to to Campus Drive, heading south towards Broomfield. Poses of this is that it can use some existing bike lanes that are on Campus Drive. It does have an enhanced campus connection, but it again lacks the direct connection to Chip Waters Park and to White's Woods. It would require some partnership with the university and possibly land control discussions. The additional route length is about 0.16 miles and about $100,000 in additional costs. And you'll notice that in in the first two options and in this option, I've I've mentioned that land control. The cost deltas do not include land control costs, so a cost of either purchasing land or obtaining public access easements on that land. So that is a brief summary. I'm happy to address any questions you have. After considering these options, you know, in the the route lengths, the conceptual costs of such, as well as public safety and recreational value, it is Beckett and Raider's suggestion that the originally proposed route remains the the most efficient and effective.
Commissioner Al Sager.
On some of these streets, I wonder what side of the street you're talking about, like for West Campus Drive, would you be on the?
Likely on the west side.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Skolinski.
I was not here for the original discussion for the proposal. What considerations for that delta and the river were taken to consideration for the estimate for the development? Obviously, there's a lot of costs associated with making sure there's no contaminants. I would love to see the trail developed and to see that connection, but with people comes trash and trash cans and gators running to and from. And I've had a lot of great times at White's Woods watching deer and stuff like that. And to see, you know, parks gator come rolling up to empty out the trash and all that kind of ruins the moment.
Yeah, the the costs that we've put together are purely development costs. Maintenance costs would be, and Phil, I don't know if you want to speak to maintenance procedures and and maintenance cost. But yes, those are those are things to to be considered, as well as the enjoyment of the people using the trail. You know, I think there are thinking of this as a a trail for all users of all abilities. And the more that we can separate non-motorized paths from from other modes of transportation, specifically motorized transportation, we increase the level of safety and the level of comfort for for users, especially users with with lesser abilities.
One my question was getting at though is what, as far as the development costs go, what types of considerations for looking out for the river itself and making sure, you know, that area is not majorly impacted?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And my apologies for misunderstanding the original question. Yes, so we integral to the the cost of the project are soil soil erosion control requirements, designing the trail in such a way that we are not adding impervious surface runoff, especially untreated runoff towards the river. And also being sensitive to to slopes and and wildlife habitats as well. When the original trail route was proposed, our staff walked that route, evaluated the existing conditions and mapped that route in the most sensitive way as as we could.
Okay, well, ultimately, obviously, it's going to be up to the contractor to complete the work without disturbing everything at the end of the day.
Right. And that that's going to be also included in the construction documents for the projects. There would be limits of disruption, limits of disturbance for the project, soil erosion controls dictated within the documents, as well as the appropriate eagle wetland permits and, you know, et cetera. So yes, there certainly be environmental controls in place.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Bush, I believe I had next.
I I just want to go out and say that I like the 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 last option. I do feel like we really kind of we're almost operating under a mandate that we could not, you know, make adjustments to 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 White's Woods just because of what C M U and the Dow Foundation had set up for us. And you know, I and I entered this conversation when I had my mind completely changed. I'll be honest with you. I at first thought that paving was going to be the the best option. I I was worried about the accessibility. You know, I was worried about erosion in the in White's Woods anyway and knew that it needed there's parts that needed work, but I had my mind kind of change. And I I think that this final one is kind of a little bit of a opportunity in disguise because we are already like with with 75% of the rest of this trail, we are already giving people something they don't get in other parts of the trail, which is Mount Pleasant's fantastic city parks. If we scoot the trail just a little bit over to the east, even though it's not necessarily the most, you know, gorgeous part of C M U, it connects us to our community partner C M U, which should also be really involved in this project. And I can see potential for, you know, something, maybe a new C M U sign at that corner. So that when people like theoretically are coming around that back corner, have some like C M U welcome interpretation. Because otherwise, people might just go through, you know, and not really see. Oh, oh, wait, did I just go through C M U? You know, or I I just think there's there's actually an opportunity for a little bit of more community buy-in with this last option. That's my thoughts.
Commissioner Al Sager.
I agree with Commissioner Bush. We I look at it from coming from the south. So we're coming up on West Campus Drive. It makes sense to continue on West Campus Drive. But then my question is, if you go down Watson, then you're entering the park system at a different places. You're bypassing Chippewaters. And you're just going right towards whatever that park's called.
Nelson.
Mill Park.
No, Mill King Park. But so anyhow, it it eliminates.
This one doesn't go up Watson, though. This this particular route does not go Watson. So what you're looking at here is this is West Campus Drive all the way to the old Northwest Apartments, going through that parcel of Northwest Apartments. And then going down that slope in some way back down to High Street to the light at Watson. You won't actually be on Watson at all.
But there's a light there.
Right. It'll get you back to Watson. But I'm saying it's not. You're not going down Watson.
No, I understand.
I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure you understood.
Cross at a light. And you can be on an existing trail.
Yeah, and the nice wide, the the bike lanes already there too.
Vice Mayor. I I actually like, I'm one of the people who said absolutely not to White's Woods. Okay, you know, because of the erosion and a whole range of other problems. And I'm looking at the picture that one of residents presented earlier in terms of width of the trail. You were talking about minimal impact to, you know, the environment. I I I don't know how what that means, what that means in terms of minimal impact to the environment seriously, because I go down that section practically every day. So if we widen it, what does that mean? It brushes very closely to people's fences, really. So but I like the last one. One, because we have been talking about partnership with C M U. It also makes it possible for students actually to go from campus, you know, and use that to come, you know, towards, you know, you know, so yeah, come towards towards High Street. Quite a number of students who ride their bikes across from, what is it, the northeastern or the northern part, this part of campus Broadway through, and I see them up Watson. And so if we created a trail that uses existing pathways and, you know, sort of goes across campus, I think it would be beneficial to students. I do think that there is, you know, a really important need to preserve, you know, the the preservation, you know, the wood preserve that White's Woods is. You know, I I I think that I would go for this. And despite the cost, when we're looking at the budget initially, my understanding was that there would be some grant, you know, we're gonna, you know, apply for some grants. Okay. If there is partnership with C M U and we talk about the benefits for students who are trying to, you know, go from one end of the city to you know, to C M U, who knows what kinds of grants that they may also, you know, suggest that we could look at. So it's not as if, you know, the city is going to foot the entirety of the cost of this particular project. There are benefits. And I would suggest that we look, you know, really closely, you know, at that particular, you know, you know, option, which is the last option. I know where the Northwest Apartments are. I also walk around there because that adjoining street is May Street, you know, so it goes through there and joins of joins Watson. So I think there is need to look at that. You know, I would encourage us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Other members of the Commission, Commissioner Rowland.
I like this one, this last one, because I I ride through Nelson Park in my chair, you know, at least twice a week. And I see a lot of students in hammocks and hanging out there. And for us to actually promote this route, you know, to bring the students and integrate them further into the community. I mean, we complain about not having you know, High Street separates the townies from the university people. But if we want to be a college town, this is a great beginning of becoming a true college town, to have more interaction with the students rather than having them hang out down south of High and then coming to the bars, you know, on Thursday. We want them to actually come and join us and basically become integrated into our communities. And this is a great way to get started on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Bershbocker.
Um, the I think that we have gotten a little off off the beaten path there. They're now talking about students when we were talking about connecting the trails, the North Trail to the South Trail. I agree that using West Campus Drive because it is much wider and it already has some designation for bike paths. But it will leave out one of our one of our parks. And I think that was the whole idea was that we are going to connect our parks. And then there was talk of it doesn't. And then there was um talk of it doesn't matter if it costs a little bit more. Well, let me, you know, I need to remind everyone. Our parks are an expense. Our parks do not create revenue for us. We're not going to, you know, have a button on the ground that when you drive over it, you know, fifty cents comes out of your credit card, right? Um, so we need to, we need to make sure that when we decide what we want to do here, that we are doing it in the most cost-effective way. We are providing the connection from the south to the north, like we've talked about. And, and I have to, um, I have to say, Commissioner Rollins, those kids that come down on Thursday are not hanging out in hammocks. Okay, they're gonna come down Thursday anyways.
Well, no, they're hanging out at the bars, but I'm trying to, and what I'm saying is that outside of that, like on the weekends, like on the afternoons, they are in Nelson Park.
There are some in Nelson.
Right, but you know, we want to encourage more of that. Even though this does not connect directly to Chippewas. Going on to High Street, it does connect to Mill Pond.
Yes, it does.
I mean, it's still a connection even though it's an indirect one. I mean, gotta take what we can take.
Yeah, but I also see the connection on High Street as um just as dangerous a connection as riding down Broomfield. Cause Broomfield, uh, High Street, that is a hill there. I have seen um deer carcasses from them coming down the hill.
But deer don't ride bikes though.
No, but deer hit bikes.
Well, yeah, but deer hit everything.
They don't care, yeah. But I'm just saying there, um, when you're riding through that area, I think that um there is some research that shows that when a bicyclist is on a road, a, the bicyclist tries to almost unconsciously keep up with the speed of the traffic, which makes it a little more dangerous. Gotcha. So I'm just thinking in safety concerns and I know that West Campus Drive, it goes right. It's right behind my house. There's a lot of traffic that goes very quickly through there as well. Um, to do this, though, I think would have to, um, and like I said, I'm not any of these routes are fine as far as I'm concerned, but what concerns me is that the places that are higher trafficked, um, we're going to have to put in more safety measures, um, make the paths wider, um, even maybe put in some rails. Yes.
Director Biscorner, if you wanted to.
Real quick too, one of the things to just consider, um, in this route, I, we haven't really thought this completely through, obviously a hundred percent. Um, but we do not maintain the route south of, on West Campus Drive currently. And so the route that this proposes would stay on campus property, like gets campus road. And so we would have to determine who's going to maintain that as well. Um, obviously, we would be a partner in all that stuff, but um, that would have to be all part of the discussion and then where do we stop and all that stuff too. So, cause we plow ours um, in the winter too, so.
Um, if I can jump in on this, um, because I want to get my questions out of the way cause I feel like I'm gonna ask some questions about options that aren't even considered right now. The three point one million for one of the options, the Lincoln Road and everything. I just want to highlight, we're not doing that one and everything. So we're not spending additional.
It was, it was an option in the area.
Yep, nope, I appreciate that, but I am curious, um, the, like, it's such a jump from all the others. Is it the bridge on Lincoln, like updating that bridge? Is that, it's the length, it's the broad length?
Yeah, just, it's a combination. It's, it's the pure length. It's almost two miles longer than the other routes.
That's what does it.
As well as, uh, you know, along those roads, if, oh, there's the shoulder of the road and then, and then there are ditches. So we have to, you know, we have to realign those ditches in order to make room for the trail. And then there's the, uh, the crossing of the river on Lincoln. So there's just a, a lot of factors that add up along that route.
Gotcha. Um, other questions I had then, um, I believe Watson Road, uh, number three was talked about topography was going to be one of the challenges on there. I'm already talking about like up, like hill elevation or what are we talking about on that?
Correct, correct. So the, the right-of-way of Watson Road is, is fairly narrow. And then on portions of that, immediately outside of the right-of-way, there are steep hills uh, up to, up to houses.
That was on.
Sometimes even within the right-of-way. So in order to create the, the width of the pathway we need, we wind up cutting into those hills and affecting existing trees or fences or retaining walls that, you know, that all need to be dealt with in some way. So those, uh, those items uh really start to impact the cost.
Really, really? Yeah. One of the biggest um criticisms of the original plan that I, I remember taking in when it was, when we were getting public feedback was concerning, um, uh, the space, oh gosh, what park is it? It's um Chippewas Park um on the east. Once you cross the river going along, and then it follows closely to the river there. Um, so when I started out as a student here and everything, it used to be probably ten yards further west towards the riverbank. And I know spots that like my friends and I used to hammock in and everything. And we also went down to the bars, but we also hammacked and everything. Um, that section's completely gone. Like those trees aren't there anymore. Kind of talk me through like the thoughts on that and everything because I know that bank has continued. Is that part of our bank restoration there? Like, can you talk about that topic?
Yes, so that's a piece that we're, we've identified in our plans moving forward in the river. Um, that was going to be part of this discussion, should we have moved that way. If we're not going to go that way, then we don't, it's not our part.
More natural.
Yeah, you know, so we don't have to worry about that as much. Um, but we still have to maintain our side. Um, which is part of the Mill Pond Dam project that we're going through. Part of that is Chippewas Park and that one bend that is eroding considerably. It's like straight up and down there. So we're identifying those portions of the river that need to be stabilized.
Gotcha. Um, let's see, as far as working with it. And then the last thing I wanted to, looping back into the discussion that was taking place there. I think, um, you know, plans change over time. We set, we set plans in place and then we develop them and we change them over time. So I think the original idea, yes, it was to connect all the parks. Um, but I do, the discussion about like bringing in like engaging students and bringing in CMU, I think that's an in- interesting discussion of like something that we could like pick up on and everything through this. Um, I, we don't have this map up there, so just kind, it might be a verbal walkthrough. But what is the southern, the existing southern connection? It follows we- West Campus Drive and would it like loop around to Bluegrass essentially?
Goes to Deerfield.
Uh, like over to Deerfield? Let me pull my Mac back.
Goes along Deerfield and then it goes along the south mission.
Okay, so it goes over West Campus and then to Deerfield. Okay, gotcha. The old highway, gotcha. Okay, goes Deerfield. Okay, and like into East Deerfield Road, where it's old highway. Okay. Because there's a lot of college apartments over there. There's a lot of like, again, where you have people who don't have cars, um, who live, who already rely upon.
You're not going your top speed there.
Yeah, no, yeah. Um, but in any case, like I know, like I used to live over in Copper Beach and everything. I'm pretty sure if I'm reading this right, it would take over into that area. Um, which again, I know I hear from members of the international community who don't have cars, who rely on bikes and everything. Um, that's, that's a, that's a big issue for them. So if we can, like, you know, we get public pushback on one part, but if we could then swing it to have a more positive impact, we could work with Union Township through that stretch potentially to connect those apartments. Um.
That's, that's already established.
That's established.
It's an established trail there.
Well, I'm just saying the, uh, uh, expanding the bike trail and everything from that area up into campus right there. That's.
Yeah, it's, it stops at Broomfield.
It already exists.
Stops at, so the southern connection stops at Broomfield.
Broomfield and West Campus.
Broomfield and West Campus.
Just extending it.
Kiwatten Village Apartments were that were torn down.
Yeah.
That's where.
That's where it currently ends.
Gotcha. So in the future, when it's finished, like the, the current connection, like and when it passes out of Mount Pleasant.
South and go all the way into Shepherd, where it currently goes right now. So right now it goes, when you go south through that West Campus Drive and then it spits you out on Deerfield. Then you go east on Deerfield to Old Mission. Then you go south on Old Mission. And I forget what the turn is. Is it Blanchard to cross?
In any case, my point being.
And then you go to the Shepherd Bar.
Another bar. My point being is that like, I think like increased bike connections is the, is the important part there. Students can more easily access this because we're also connecting this trail to the existing trail. Um, versus like putting it through the parks, you're putting it closer to campus than they could bike to campus more easily. That's my point there.
Well, I, I understand that concept of, um, you know, giving the students, they already have the access right up to campus. Because it comes right up to, onto um Broomfield. It follows West Campus up to Broomfield. Um, my, my understanding is that we were proposing this trail, this bike trail for this connection from south to north was to utilize our park systems, which we already have trails through and to reduce any, um, oh, you know, bike trails or bike usage on our streets to make it safer for the bikers that use that trail. That was my understanding and they were really only crossing a couple of major streets. They would cross, if they come through Chippewas, they'd cross High Street, they'd go into Mel Pond and then they'd cross Broadway and uh go up and then cross Pickard to get to the north end of the trail.
Okay, Commissioner Bush?
Uh, I, you know, I know that was the original plan and like I said, I was all on team, go through our parks. Um, but I think we, I, I just really feel like we've encountered a barrier. And, but sometimes barriers can be opportunities for us to like reconsider what our goals are. And our, our goals are to provide an experience that enriches the Mount Pleasant community and those that visit the Mount Pleasant community. Are people going to get that if we go through, you know, seventy-five percent of our parks? Acknowledging that i- in whatever future interpretation goes into this network, um, we can acknowledge that we have this Chippewas Park that is right over here. And we even have this, you know, primitive, uh, more preserve-type park um, that is, uh, you know, connected to CMU, that's, you know, not accessible by bikes, but you can take your bikes into Chippewas Park if you want to spend, you know, some time in Chippewas Park. That's not out of the question, but I think that we're still going to be providing a, a more, uh, an even possibly more enriching opportunity when you have people going through and then they become more aware of, oh, I'm also going through Central Michigan University. And does, I mean, does the, the bike trail go through other college campuses right now? Does it go through, what, how many park, like how many city park systems does it go through?
Quite a few through, earmark that goes quite through.
Well, the, the, okay, yeah, I, I knew there were some, but like, so we're, but we're offering both. Not to mention, like, we're also going through a little bit of some visibility downtown. To me, it's like, it's about visibility. I mean, I, I, um, it also brings to mind, I think that it would be valuable to make sure we have thorough interpretation that there, what people on the bike trail are entering and the, uh, you know, uh, the reservation lands too. Like I, I think that this is an opportunity to remind us that we need to involve all community players, even though we represent the city. Representing the city also means working with our community partners. And I just feel like we have an opportunity in, um, you know, in disguise here.
Vice Mayor.
I, you know, it's, it seems to me that we have, we do have an option to do something differently. We don't have to connect all the parks. They can, you know, they can double back. Somebody who wants to go see what Chippewas Park looks like there, it's, it's less than a quarter of a mile, shift to the left, go see it and continue. Or park your bike there and take a descent wa- walk across, you know, into Vice Woods and then continue if you want to. And even this, the, the idea that going through Vice Woods, you know, uh, yes, of course you can go through Vice Woods. It's, it's beautiful, but really are they going to stop there and watch? You know, it's just, let's go zap through there and, and we're gone. So what are they really seeing? So I, I do think, I do think that, you know, um, there is benefit, you know, to look at this uh last option whereby people can use existing pathways or trails, connect. And if they do choose to put a sign there that says Chippewas Park, if you want to go see it, to the, you know, to the west, go see it. Or they can continue. But I do think also that, you know, yes, it's not, we're not talking primarily about students. But students will benefit as a consequential, you know, advantage of having this trail developed. There are a lot of students who live over here and I see them, you know, who drive, you know, ride their bikes up the hill to go to campus. Will they benefit? Of course. Are we developing the trail just to accommodate them or to attend to their interests? Perhaps not, but a side, you know, uh, consequential, you know, benefit of having the trail go through campus is that it actually helps the students get to campus, you know, easily, hopefully. Um, regarding the costs, yeah, of course. If we even put it through Vice Woods, it's still going to cost us money to maintain it, perhaps even more. What I'm suggesting is that we partner with CMU. This is one way of saying, hey, you know, work with us. Um, how do we do this collaboratively to improve the city? I don't see how we cannot look at this because it says to us that there are advantages, there are possibilities of doing this. Why don't we at least try looking at that? So, you know, rather than just simply persist on trying to destroy this, you know, uh, natural or, you know, preservation, which is the only one that is around here. The last time that I saw one, that I went to one, I had to go outside Mount Pleasant to go to uh the Sylvan Solace. If you get rid of this one, you're gonna have to go outside Mount Pleasant to go over there. You know, maybe there's another one here that I don't know, but that's the one that I know. I think that there is something important about preserving that and also paying attention to the fact that that area floods all the time. And part of that flooding comes into my backyard.
Commissioner Al Sager.
Um, I just want to give the perspective of someone who rides her bike for exercise. I'm not trying to stop at parks. I'm trying to get from point A to point B. And so that's why I like this fifth option.
Commissioner Spitzky?
Um, when I, I look at this, my mind kind of goes all over the place. First of all, I'm impressed the fact that CMU even considered opening up Vice Woods for any type of development in any way, shape or form. Um, from my first classes at CMU, it was a, a preserve. That's where we went for our biology class and learned all about the different, you know, so on and so forth. Um, some kind of, I have mixed feelings about them even opening up. Um, when we, when we open up the idea of having a trail going through Vice Woods, we, we're introducing people. People are a variable, a variable that we have no way of controlling. Um, once you break an egg, you're not gonna unbreak it, you know. Uh, no matter how careful the developers and the contractors are, no matter what type of plan they put forth, um, like we've said, plans get changed. They go sideways. Um, all it takes is one type of mistake to where you have diesel field that's now leaking into the Chippewa River. Um, because there was a careless mistake on site. Um, do these types of accidents happen often? No, but they do happen. It's a variable that is out of our control. Um, what is in our control? Uh, where we choose to uh develop this trail? It seems like from the majority of everybody from the public that has spoken, nobody's opposed to connecting the trails. They're just concerned about where it gets con- connected. Um, this trail is a, a mode of transportation, A to B, you know, like, like we've already kind of agreed upon. When you're zipping through the, the A to B, you're not looking so much at what's going on around you. So are you really missing out going through Vice Woods when we're already going through Mel Pond and Island Park and Nelson Park and everything along those lines going along the river? No, not so much. Um, I've spent a lot of time in Vice Woods. I love going floating down the Chippewa, um, taking walks through there. The people that I know that utilize Vice Woods, utilize it for what it is currently. Um, if you start taking down trees and putting in paths and Um, if you start taking down trees and putting in paths and setting up trash cans and benches, you're gonna lose a lot of that natural charm. You're gonna lose a lot of the opportunities for people to forage. Um, which is really a really awesome, unique feature that you have in Mount Pleasant along our, our trail systems. Um, so I, I don't think that people are gonna be losing out too much not having it go through. Um, so I, I really do like this idea of having a, an option that enhances public transportation within the, within the community. Um, you know, mu- uh, CMU students make up half of our population and to help enhance the ability for them to get A to B, tie in some of the businesses, you know, just west of Mission Street. Um, be able to provide a safer means for them to get from student housing to downtown. I don't know how many times I've seen students, uh, walking down the railroad tracks or something along those lines. You know, this is a means for them to, to be able to have something that's off of the streets. Um, and to be able to get from housing to downtown wherever they are doing something other than hammocking. Um, you know, I, I really, I just, I, I feel like this is a really a win-win-win situation. As long as CMU is willing to open up White's Woods, it seems like they would be open up to this type of idea as well and partnering and, and, and something that would be a benefit to the students as well as the community and, uh, all the other bikers that are gonna be using, using the trail. So that's, that's just my thoughts on it.
It sounds like you're going for not the, the last one?
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent.
I just.
I, I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into your presentation and everything though. I really do.
I, I have one more question. So this part that you're proposing starts at High Street. What do we have in the works for going north from High Street?
It's already there.
It's there.
From there, cross High Street.
There are, the trail already goes to the light at High Street.
Yeah.
At Watson or at?
At Watson, yes.
Okay.
So this would get it, so this trail would get you back to that light at Watson, just coming from east to west. Right now the trail goes from that light west.
To Broomfield.
And then crosses directly over to Mill Pond.
Right.
And so that just, it's that connection this way.
And then where do we cross Broadway?
Broadway is.
It's by Mountain Town Station.
By Ellen Creek.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Right by us.
And then we head west and, okay, all right.
Six hundred feet.
Yeah, it's funny. I always just go south or I put the bike in the car and go north.
Yeah. They have a connection.
Yeah, yeah, cause we don't have connections.
All right, bringing it back in, we're having a lot of sign conversations here. Um, it sounds like disagreements on, on specific topics. Um, a bit of mission drift has been, has been brought up here from what originally was established. But, um, interest from the commission sounds most, uh, like, it sounds like the commission is most interested in pursuing the West Campus Drive as a possible alternative. Um, all right, so that would involve conversations with CMU and then addressing like additional funding gaps and everything there. And topography and everything would be the key features. Um, but it sounds like that's the direction that the commission at this time would be interested in heading in, so, yeah. Um, any final comments or anything?
Yeah, if, if I may, uh, I'll just mention, you can tell by our pros and cons that, uh, that we entered this and looked at this through the lens of connecting recreational facilities within, you know, within the city. Uh, looking at this trail as a, as primarily a recreational asset as well as a transportational asset. Uh, that being said, the, the West Campus Drive is certainly viable. Uh, our offices in, in Ann Arbor, we certainly understand the town and gown relationship and the benefits, uh, that that can provide. Uh, I think really what I'm, what I'm hearing, uh, in some of the comments tonight is, is really a matter of priorities, uh, priorities between campus connections, town gown relationship, and priorities on recreational facilities and linking those rest- recreational assets. Uh, and a little bit of differences between the trail serving as a transportation mode uh, versus a recreational mode. Not that a trail can't serve both, but the, the pathway, the route that the trail takes puts a little bit different emphasis on, on those two items. The, the character of the trails will also be a little bit different. The, uh, the campus drive trail will have more of a, more of an urban feel to it. Whereas the, the original trail will have more of a natural recreational feel to it. So those are, uh, those are probably very obvious statements, but I just thought I would recap what I was hearing so that, uh, you all can, uh, can consider appropriately.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your comment right now, but I do, I, 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 you know, I see both possibilities. It is still going to be, it will still serve as a recreational pathway. Because the people who are engaged in it are engaged in some, in biking. All they need to do is get from one end to the other, into the other parks. They just missed one. They will still experience the natural landscape of the city. They may not experience all of it. But what I was saying is that in addition to that, you get this benefit. Because it's the benefit that we didn't think about when we were looking at the initial proposal, that was not there. It might be there, but in addition to the recreational service or option this last one offers to people who are biking, you get this other piece, you know, where students benefit also. And there's nothing that says our students cannot benefit. We're not, I'm not talking primarily about students. I'm just recognizing the fact that if we do this, this is also how it will impact the lives of students, you know? And hopefully bring the people riding through town, through campus, so that they can see CMU has a beautiful campus and beautiful landscaping. There's no reason why they, you know? Hopefully they'll see that and appreciate that also. Thank you for the presentation.
Uh, Director Biscorner.
And Brian, you can tell me if I'm wrong on this, but just with this possible connection, we may lose the opportunity to apply for the DNR funding. Because you won't have any of your points be a park.
Gotcha.
Um, and so that's a potential. It's the four hundred thousand, so it would be a portion of what we got for the previous one. I would have to double check that, but I think that part of the points are, is the, that, yeah. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't score as well because you don't have any park systems as either side of the, the point.
But I think, but I think we also have to consider what it would cost as far as the negative impact on the environment.
No, yeah, I'm not, I'm just letting you know off the top. I just want everybody to be aware. That's all I'm saying it for is that it's potential that we lose that funding if, if this ro- I mean,
Can we?
We're gonna do what, we're gonna do what you guys want us to do. That's what we're here for, so.
Yeah. Can we look at, can we look at other funders, businesses, industry, for passion and all of those? We're gonna have to, let's expand the scope of, you know, who is funded.
As, as we explore this often, I imagine you'll bring back more.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's gonna be a lot of, the, almost the entire route is on CMU property.
Yeah.
So.
It'll be a lot of discussion.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, thank you, Director Biscorner.
Yeah.
With that being said, now, this is great for CMU, but I know that there's ways to, to shore up, um, banks along those lines to make sure they're not gonna wash out. You can put netting, you can reinforce with roots and things along those lines where you can still maintain that natural feel. Um, and I don't think, what I think of the impact, I was really concerned about the change to the dams when they originally took place. When we put the, the paths through, uh, the outlook and everything along those lines. But those turned out absolutely amazing and you see how mu- how much of the community utilizes those paths now. So I, I just feel like this would be a, a greater asset to incorporate the, the town and gown relationship that was so eloquently put.
Yeah. Well, thank you everyone for the great discussion this evening, um, with no other business before the commission at this time. I adjourn us at nine oh seven.
Well, thank.
Thank you. Good, good commissioning. Good work.
Good work.
Good.
I suppose it's prospective mission.
With you getting, which is. Stay. Well, they.
Tough decisions, tough decisions.
Okay, gotcha. I think we're going to. Thanks.